Welcome back to the city because I've lost my It was fine. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting for the West Valley City Council this July eighth twenty twenty five and we're beginning our meeting at four thirty P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have almost all the members here. So Councilman Hune is not here yet. Councilman Norfeld is joining us online. Councilmember Wood is at the table. Councilmember Wedstone is online. Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen and myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic and Councilman Hune. And we have our minutes of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Turn those to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion a second. I'll favor please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Those stand apprised. We have our review of our regular meeting this evening. Were there any changes or adjustments or questions?
We do have one update.
On the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, we'll ask Mr. Johnson to come up and explain that one to us. I don't think he'll stay here for the resolutions.
Not sure if I heard correctly. Are we on the resolutions right now? What are we talking about?
Type of agenda and then I'll just let you stay.
What's the agenda item?
At sixty four hundred west one that we added.
Oh, yes, sixty eight hundred west. Yeah, this is a right of way acquisition. I apologize. Thank you. This is a right of way acquisition that we've been working on for quite some time for the sixty eight hundred west improvement project. Where we're doing improvements kind of in conjunction with the development that's happening out there as well. And this is the, the, if you're on sixty hundred west, this is the west property right at thirty five hundred south, the old service station. And we've been in negotiations with this particular property owner for quite some time and we finally were able to to come to an agreement price and they've signed and if you would like to this executed immediately so that we can get this property available, available to our contractor for work right now. So.
And the subdivision going in is on the east side of that road.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, so any other changes tonight's agenda?
No changes.
Okay, then was there any other questions on any issues on tonight's agenda? Okay, then we'll move to our resolutions and begin with resolution twenty five dash one hundred and one oh one. We'll turn the time to Mr. Johnson.
Great. Resolution twenty five dash one hundred is a modification to a cooperative agreement that we that we recently executed with UDOT and they've identified some additional funds. We kind of knew this was coming, but they identified some additional funds. And so we're, we're simply modifying the agreement and adding the ability to add more funds to this thirty five hundred south fifty four hundred west sidewalk project. That's actually already under construction and been awarded by the council. So this simply just adds funds from UDOT. So we're grateful for that.
So it'll be the exact same project, just more funding, less responsibility.
Yeah, less matching funds that we will have to come up with. Correct.
Awesome. Okay, don't see any questions. So twenty five, one oh one.
This next item, we are a, we are awarding a maintenance contract to Morgan Pavement to apply a pavement maintenance surface seal on roughly eleven miles worth of roads throughout the city. This is a, a, it's kind of a, it's a seal coat. This is a sprayed on product. And in the past, we've, we've, we've applied these types of products before and we've actually used Onyx quite a bit this, with this particular product that we are applying. But, but this year we, we decided to issue an RFP and let the market come to us with products and proposals for, for this sprayed product. Because with this particular product, it's not just like asphalt where you can specify a specific type of asphalt and get it. There, there are proprietary products on the market. And so you couldn't really just bid a seal coat. There's, there's broad array of, of products. And so we, we issued an RFP, had three responders and ultimately selected Onyx to be the product that we intend to use in the coming years. And, and then Morgan Pavement has the low, low bid on this product. So for this, for this one year at least.
So where the streets cited upon streets.
This type of a treatment is generally applied to newer pavements. It's kind of like a, it's a sunscreen type of a thing to keep the UV rays and the water out to, to keep the oils from oxidizing and prolong the life of the, of the pavement. And so these are generally recently overlaid or recently constructed roadways. And on older roadways, we, we also do, I'm sure you've been around long enough in the city and have seen our slurry seal program that we do in-house. We will put that typically on older pavements that, that might need a little bit more structural strength. But this is really just a preventative and a life extending treatment on these roadways.
So just for reference, so this one, the corner, that's that Sunset Hills down on the bottom.
Yep. Yes, it is. And those are newer pavements. It's a pretty new subdivision out there. Yep.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? You're watching those, right?
Right.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to resolution twenty five dash one zero two and turn the time over to Mr. Arselenian.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jake Arselenian, Director of Facilities and Construction Management. Before you, there is a resolution to approve a contract with EDA Architects for services for the Maverick Center renovation cost estimate. And I need to explain to you a little bit of what that is. EDA Architects was one of the seven organizations that accepted our invitation for an RFP and was the only one responding with the RFP cost estimate. However, there's a caveat to that. There's a group of engineers and contractors that worked on the east center originally. And Populous, formerly known as HOK, who was the sports arena designer for the east center. So they are a major component in this RFP in working with EDA Architects as the principals on the project. And there are several other engineering firms, ME engineers, who did the T-Mobile was also the electrical, the mechanical engineer on the east center. Resolute, who is doing the Delta Center right now, is also the electrical engineer that did the east center. And Rivley Engineering was the structural engineer. And Oakland Construction are involved as a construction consultant. And actually the ones that will be putting together the cost estimate for this project. So there is quite few people involved in this project. And this slide shows who's all involved and, and the depth of the involvement from each organization. From the city, I would be the, the liaison between the city and all the project organizations with EDA and with our executive committee, which our assistant city manager, John Flores and, and our RDA director Jonathan Springmeyer and Andy Carroll is part of that group that working, we're working together to come up the needs for the Maverick Center renovation. So this is just a highlight. There was about thirty bullets of things that we need to do for the Maverick Center as, and as you know, the building is almost thirty years old. And there's a lot of needs for renovation, for improvement. The arena seats needs to be replaced. The suites need to be upgraded and updated. We, we need to make a VIP lounge that we don't have at this time, renovating the lavatories, the restrooms, and add some women's restroom because we're, we're always short. Whenever we have a large activity in the building, there's always huge lines in front of the restroom and missing the activities, what they paid, what they came to see. And the parking lot needs to be redone and many other mechanical systems, the ice need to be replaced. Again, when a building is almost thirty years old, there is a lot of needs for renovations. So there is very tight timeline that we have asked from EDA Architects and the group because we would like to have by mid-October a document together so that Andy and Jonathan could take it up to the hill and start looking for funding to pay for all of this. And we want to beat everybody to the punchline and be there before November and start lobbying. So that's why this timeline is so tight because there's a lot to do and a lot to find out what needs to be done and how much all of this will be cost. And what, what would they deliver to us for the three hundred and seven thousand dollars? Is first, we're asking them that we want to make sure that they have an evolution of cultural shift. Because right now, technology is the most important thing in every arena that you go to. And we want to be in, in advanced technology and we want to provide spectator expectations and enjoyment. When they come to our Maverick Center, we want them to go and spread the news that this is the best center in the valley and in the western United States. We want to also provide a flexible document to allow us as a team, internal team, to prioritize our project. What should go first? What should come to the end closer to the Olympics? And how much we could start doing now immediately as funds become available? Provide a metric showing individual scope of work. Which scope of work will cost, make sense to work on now that would cost less? Because obviously, as I've told you before, every time we wait a day, a week, a month, a year, we pay twice and three times as much to repair or replace or reconstruct. And finally, we want to make sure that, we want their recommendation on phasing the project. And the timing is of an essence. So every time I say we want to renovate and make sure that we have a product that we can be proud of and it services our customers the best way possible. And of course, we want to, the end product is also an Olympic, as an Olympic venue, we have a lot of pride in what is coming in twenty thirty four. I always tell Andy, oh, we have ten years. He always corrects me. No, there's about eight and a half years. So the time is of an essence. So we, we're in a crunch. And with the construction projects, we're competing with everybody out there today. And Delta Center is one of them and many other venues in the valley that are competing for contractors. The cost that came to us, which fits our budget, is the three hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's my presentation. What can I help you understand better or answer some of your questions?
Questions? So we have these funds in our budget now or are they coming from an outside source?
So the, the funding is from the state. Five hundred thousand that's coming in, that is in as we speak, the, the check is in our hands. And a hundred and somewhat thousand of it goes to that band around the building for, for the letterings. And the rest of it was supposed to go to this. So the funding is in place. I just need to do a budget opening.
And I'm sure EDA will give us a comprehensive report of what they would recommend. And then you'll bring it back to us and we can talk about that and decide what things we like and what things we think we can go with.
As a staff, is our job to present to you the total list because what we're asking EDA to do with Populous and the entire group to give us their vision of what needs to be, we gave them a list. Like I said, there was, I mean, thirty bullets. That's quite a bit. We gave them a list at the pre bidding, the documents that they walked through the building and they saw firsthand what that list is. It's a very comprehensive list, what it's entailed. They have to give us a report of every item on that list that needs to be replaced or repaired and a cost associated with it. Because we are going to solicit for grants for this according actual cost and not just made, made up by somebody. So the actual cost is as of this year, right? Every year's costs go up or change. But they're going to give us a comprehensive document for us to be able to go and solicit fundings. They also going to give us a three, three D drawings, several of them, so that we could make a presentation so that we can actually show you what we are talking about replacement and each one of those costs associated with it. So we're not holding back. We're hoping that we could renovate this building to last us another thirty years. Because it's a great location. It's an awesome building.
Are we going to put the was like West Valley City outside of building?
Absolutely. It is West Valley City building.
You can put in there, right?
Yes.
It hasn't been there. So.
No, yes, you're absolutely right. We want to recognize as West Valley City facilities and not Salt Lake City two thousand and two.
So we already had all of the lighting changed out to LED.
We have some lighting changed, changed to LED and we have a lot that we haven't touched. The, the center bowl is done, but nothing around the building or in interior of the building. We haven't done major renovations, Mayor, to this building. So this will be the first time to take the opportunity to get some funding from the state. Hopefully it's big enough funding that we could do major renovations.
And then what if the firm comes up with things you guys haven't thought about? Are they free to do that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And one of the things that I shared with them is that we don't want to stifle your creativity. We're giving you what we see. But like Populous right up, because they originally built the building, they knew some things that I haven't thought of. So we wanted to let them also dive in, go all the nook and cranny is how we could expend the building, go out maybe. Internally, there's a lot of dead spaces in the building. So maybe they could work on those. And absolutely, we wanted them to be creative, innovative, and the bottom line is the Maverick Center has to be elite. Not only sports, also activities and concerts.
Does they gonna give us more money for the?
Well, that's going to be the sharp experience of Andy and Jonathan and, and now maybe Sam going to be involved to go up and knock on doors and wow the people. So hoping that, that's a very good question. The documentation going to give the state enough information to say, oh, you guys need a lot of money. Let's help you with this much. I'm not sure how much that would be, but hoping that it's a lot.
When we had the last time, two, two thousand and two, right?
Two thousand and two Olympics.
Yeah. So right now it's a long time. So maybe to make a pitch, go tell them and, you know what I'm saying? So we can get more money.
Let me tell you what, Councilman, there was some good report from the Olympic Committee that visited us with Mr. Peely and the mayor was there three months ago, something like that, four months ago. How long have you been here, sir? It was at the beginning. Yeah. So they came and they love our venue. They just wanted some additional changes and catching up with the technology, obviously.
Hey, any other questions? One online? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, now go to resolution twenty five dash one oh three. Turn the time over to Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So this is a resolution to award an agreement to Landmark Design to create a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As a department, we haven't done a formal master plan from an outside agency in our existence. But we feel like it's a really valuable resource to have a neutral third party come in and evaluate our current amenities and help us prioritize long term in, to both develop new parks and property acquisition, but as well as renovations of existing parks and trails and recreation and arts, a lot of other elements as well, but, but primarily focused on park development. They, we put out an RFP and got bids back from three companies. Landmark Design was the lowest responsible bidder. And what's really nice about them is they've done a lot of these locally. They are here in Utah and they've done a lot of, a lot of master plans for local cities and, and communities and really have been well, well liked by the cities that have used them and have, have put together a great product for them. So, so we're asking for approval of a contract. It, it would require a budget opening, be funded from the fund balance, but really will be valuable for us as our, as we determine what projects to prioritize and what amenities were, were lacking. There would be a, a pretty thorough report that they submit to us at the, at the conclusion. What questions can I answer for you?
That would include the parks that still need to be finished, right?
Correct. Yes. Yep. Property, everything from new acquisition to developing existing property that we have in the city to renovations of existing parks. Yes.
Will they do recommendation based on what they think's the most important or all of that work?
A lot of different opportunities for that. Some of it would be amenities that maybe we don't have in the city. We don't have a splash pad. We don't have a dog park. So some of it would be based on amenities that we don't currently have. Part of it would be based on equity across the city. We definitely have areas of the city that have access to more parks and, and amenities than others, other areas of the city. So there would be a lot of different elements that they would help us make those decisions. And, and I'll be honest, I don't even know all of, all of what they're going to do, but we're, we're excited to get going with them and help this guide the future of the, of the park development and renovation.
Is there a timeframe for them completing it?
We really pushed to have it done by the end of the calendar year to coincide with our, with our city budget process. And they, they, we've already kind of gotten some information from them of information that they're going to want from us right away to kind of expedite some of that process. So, so we're, we're confident that we'll be able to have a proposal to present to council by the end of the calendar year.
Can we get a list of parks and addresses of current parks and then list and address of park property?
Yeah.
That would, that would be nice to know. Because honestly, I think this is something that I would hope staff could do at least a, at a base level of kind of giving us a plan of what we have and what's developed and what's not developed. And then, then we could give input of what we want done first and second, third, fourth. Some may not want responsibly to pick that, but, but I, I think that's where I'm at.
And we have done that. That's what, that's how we've operated our, our, through, through this current time. We, the way that we prioritize has, has worked for us, but I think the neutral third party, because we, we certainly have our own biases. And so we do, we do have, we've had a plan for, you know, the forty years of existence of the city. But it, but having a, a formal plan that's a, really a guiding document that's adopted by the city council is, is a valuable tool for residents as well. So that they understand that it went through a process and that, you know, this, this is how things are going to go and this, these are, these are the priorities of the city so that it's not, you know, Jamie Young, the Parks and Recreation Director, saying this is, this is what we're doing and this is what we're spending our money on.
And then when you put that list together, would you put what year we acquired the land?
Yes. Yep. We have all, for sure. We can get that.
I think I've seen it. Well, I think we have land that was, we acquired in oh five that doesn't have a park and then some we have from twenty twenty four that does have a park.
Yep.
So I'd like to look at that in equity as well.
Okay. Yep, we can, I can get that for you.
Okay.
So these numbers right here is that we've violated, we buy those or we planned to do something? Can you let me be in the future? Can you provide us photos? And maybe, you know, playground or something, I can remodel this or maybe something else. We can, we don't know much about that.
For, for the money that will be spent?
What is that really about?
This is for the service for them to do the, to create the plan for us.
Those are the three.
Yeah, these are the three contracts that submitted bids. Correct.
The difference in the price of the bids.
Yeah. And so they will provide us a lot of information about the type of amenities, everything from, they'll have a lot of community engagement and surveys. They'll do a needs assessment. They'll evaluate our construction standards. They'll do a lot of things that will, will enhance our future development. And then as we design parks, yes, we, we, you know, select playgrounds based on the, the area. We do, we do public meetings with, with neighborhoods when we do when we, when we're designing a park, we meet with the neighborhood to find out what kind of amenities they'd like to see as well.
So master plan, so you have a, a color of the plan for us to look at or maybe email us or something?
Yep.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any of these resolutions that you would like just put in the consent agenda? Should we just take them all one by one?
Take them all one by one.
Yeah, I think that's so too. So, okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to our Housing Authority meeting and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Hill for that.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Brandon Hill with the Legal Department. This is just as exciting as arenas and parks, I swear it. Um, so a, as we're winding down Housing Authority operations, the last time we discussed this, we talked about a few of the things that would kind of need to be resolved as we move toward ultimately winding that down. And these two items are both part of that process. And so this first one is for the Jared Allen Campbell Apartments, which are proposed to be assumed by Utah Nonprofit Housing Corporation. So currently they manage those units under contract with the Housing Authority. It's a deeply affordable tax credit project. And as you can see, until twenty one hundred, it will be so. And so these kinds of projects are very challenging to maintain. The rents by virtue of the tax credit program requirements can't possibly fund the repairs. And so essentially, the only way for these to be operated is by a governmental entity or by some, something like Utah Nonprofit Housing, which is kind of in between. And so under this arrangement, they would assume the ownership and full responsibility for that. They've been managing the apartments and are going to be able to continue to do that in compliance with the law and and meet those obligations until at least twenty one hundred. So questions about that?
When the apartment complex went into service?
It was right around the turn of the century. I want to say ninety nine, ninety eight, ninety nine. And so I think the, the implicit question there is, wow, isn't that a really long And so I think the, the implicit question there is, wow, isn't that a really long tax credit period?
That's my world, so I, I know what that is. But I wonder if, if we could sell it. There's, there's some value there that instead of just transferring it to a nonprofit, if we could sell it and make a little money on it.
That's a fair question and the, the honest answer is the value of the property is negative. Because of the deep affordability requirement, you can't rent it for anything more than, these are deeply affordable units, we're talking under forty percent AMI affordable. And so essentially, as it is, they operate as a deficit and are subsidized by things like CDBG grants, state funding, our own Housing Authority money. And so given those restrictions, you really can't sell the property. The other requirement is even if the tax credit situation weren't there, so if you did sell it, you'd have to redeem the tax credits, which is tens of millions of dollars problem at this point. The other problem you'd have with that is that we'd have disposition of public housing proceeds, which we would have to then spend in that space as well. So we wouldn't be able to get any unrestricted funds.
How many people know Jared Allen Campbell? It's hard to be who's gonna date themselves. Who does? I don't care.
Yep.
Well, Mayor, you're the only one with hair.
Jared went by Jared and then Jared went by Allen and so. He was one of our planning staff members. He was very awesome with it. And where are these apartments at?
They are, they're off, they're, they're just east of Redwood Road. Steve, help me.
Thirty-three ninety-five South.
Yeah, yeah, they're just, they're just kitty corner button there.
Sixteen twelve West thirty-three ninety-five.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
What else do we have on that?
Second verse, same as the first. So this one is for two homes that are currently leased to the road home. And so to give you an overview, so the Housing Choice Voucher Program has been transferred to the Housing Authority, which is something that I probably should have mentioned initially. So as of July first, they have assumed that responsibility. It has been a total fire drill. The HUD told us eleven days before that, that, hey, good news, we're gonna do this and you have to give everybody thirty days' notice. So federal government for you. But we've been working through that finance and the Housing Authority folks have been great with that. We have these two houses that are currently leased to the road home for transitional housing purposes. And so those range from short-term temporary, you know, bridge housing to longer-term arrangements for disabled folks, things like that. And so we've got these two houses that have deed restrictions, they're currently leased at no cost, so we essentially let the road home occupy and maintain the properties. One of the homes has a deed restriction that it can't be transferred unless you give it back to the road home, who, where the property originally came from. The other is a HUD property that is a public housing funds property as well. And so the basic issue is if you don't use it and you dispose of it, then you have to replace the units with new public housing. And so that's a problem we've dealt with several times over the years. And so in order to keep them operating in accordance with the law, they, we have to find someone who's willing and able to meet those restrictions and Housing Connect has agreed to do that.
Cool. So any questions on this one? Hey, look like Kenny.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to the RDA agenda and turn the time over to Mr. Springmeyer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Before you, we have a resolution to approve an agreement with DT redevelopment for the amount of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to provide land planning and design services for the property we informally refer to as the JRM property. This is the thirteen, almost thirteen acres of land owned by the redevelopment agency adjacent to the Cultural Center on Thirty-third South and about twelfth West. This was put out to RFP. BTR was selected as the most qualified and cost-effective proposer. The plan would be to formulate an actionable plan for disposition and development of this property. We've tried the route of, let's see what the developers will buy it for and develop on it. That hasn't quite hit the target yet, so rather than trying to guess and figure out, we decided to bring you all into the kitchen to see how the sausage is made. So we're gonna do, if approved, we'll do some workshops with staff, we'll do some workshops and scenario planning with you all as the council in open meeting, idea being we, we'd pick one of our off weeks and, and have a meeting and have the consultants do and, and kind of figure out if we can collectively figure out what we want to do with this land and what we, what the market would allow us to do with this land. So study would include the existing conditions, market conditions, scenario planning and implementation of this plan. The idea being then we take, we would take that implementation plan and now we can put that out to an RFP for developers and, and hopefully have something that we all agree on that this is the best, best use of the land, what we want to see for the land, meaning all of our future and, and present criteria. Any questions?
Questions on John? Hey.
Cool. Thank you. And I thought we talked about never letting me follow, force me to follow Brandon anymore. We've.
Okay, we'll go to our communication items and we'll do our city, city survey update by Ms. McCrea.
Hi, Mayor and Town Council, Lauren McPeak, Administrative Management Analyst for the West Valley City. I am here with Ron Gailey, he has been doing our citizen survey for us and he is here today to present what him and his team have been working on and the dashboard that they have created. And so he'll answer any questions for you guys.
I think we did. I guess. I'm glad to be here, actually. I presented earlier to the department heads and that was fun. I took probably forty-five minutes here, I told, I've been told I have twenty here. So I'm gonna be a little briefer and a little more, if I don't get to everything, we don't get to everything, but there's a lot to share. Let me introduce myself briefly. I'm Ron Gailey, I, I own the company On Point Insights. Before that, I worked for Zion's Bank, I was their research director. And before that, I worked for Washington Mutual Bank and I was their research director. And before that, I worked at Coca-Cola. Well, not before that, after that. So I was working for Coca-Cola, responsible for all of the research that Coca-Cola did in Asia. And so Japan, China, Vietnam, Malaysia, Indonesia, so fourteen countries. And my job was to help executives make decisions whenever they needed to build their annual strategies and also market their products. It was a very fascinating opportunity and I left and started my own research company. And along the way, a city manager asked me if I would help them. I didn't really have any experience with it. He said, I know cities, if you know research, we can maybe make something really good together. And, and so I did, I helped them and came up with pretty much what I'm gonna share with you today. I have helped many cities across the country and many cities in Utah. And I'm just grateful that EFO was willing to work with me here and, and share the results. I presume all of you have looked at the dashboard and had a chance to look at it, but in case you haven't taken much of a look, I'm gonna introduce you a little bit to it. So on the left-hand side, you can just easily scroll to get to an area. One thing I want to note is that we got quite a few responses. We got one thousand, four hundred and fifty-six survey completes, which was very healthy. Usually if you'll use somebody to do a survey, you're gonna get between four hundred and six hundred. And so we have a really large sample. And, and if there's any difference, it's plus or minus two percent, and so you're in really good shape, you know, to see it, look at something. We also invited everybody, it was an email invite for people to participate in the survey, so it really minimized the potential of one person jumping in and taking it ten times. But we, we did put it on the website, so there was that potential, but we double-checked very carefully to make sure there was no one who did anything like that. Plus, we have all of the comments and you can just see if somebody's cheating you and they weren't. So we, you have really clean data. I want to also note a couple of things. We asked people where they lived. You have pretty good distribution across your city, where they live. District four has a lot, district two has a lot and one and three, where you'd expect because of the business concentration are a little bit small, smaller, but we got really good distribution across these areas. By the way, it's really easy to say, oh, what do the people in district one think or what are the people in district four think? So that's really easy to do on the survey, I'll show you a little bit about that. We also have good demographics, just a good mix of young and old, a good mix of male and females. I will tell you, the females always, it's not a hundred percent true with every city, but about eighty percent of the time, we have more females than males and you have more females than males here. So that's pretty normal, but you have a good mix of younger and older, male and female. Years in the city, a lot of them have been here for a long time, twenty years, but there's just as many who've been here less than that. So you have a lot of people, old timers and a lot of newcomers who are here. Most of them do not have children, but forty-six percent do, so you have a nice mix of those with children. And in this case, because we used your utility billing list to invite people to participate in the survey, most of them are homeowners. It's a bit of a, of an issue, we could have gone out with a postcard mailing to apartments to bring in more, but we decided to keep the costs contained and, and just invite people with email. But you can look at the apartment owners and see what they think, we just don't have as many of them in this sample. And there you go, and the race, we had a nice, have a nice distribution of race. It wasn't perfect and so we waited it to make it perfect, but it was pretty close. And then we just waited it so that the, the race distribution was, would match your city's race distribution. And I'm gonna pause, are there any questions before I go any further? All right, let me jump into some information that's really interesting. I'm gonna go to city priorities, to go to direction of the city. This is a really important question, have things changed in the past three years? Have we improved, stayed the same or gotten worse? There are some who think things have gotten worse, about a quarter, but most are a little more generous and think that, hey, we've stayed the same or we're, we're getting, we're improving. And also even, even if you want to, those who stay the same, most of them say we're going in the right direction and we've stayed the same, rather than we're going the wrong direction, right? So you have a lot of people who think you're going the right direction, that number's a healthy number. I'll show you a little bit more about that. However, compared to other cities, are we better or are we worse? Kind of a mixed bag on that one. You have some good cities around you. It's some tough competition to be better or worse than the cities around you. And so, so I, it comes out pretty, pretty mixed there. I'm going to, one of the things we asked, now in the survey, right up front, we just said, how do you feel about the city, right direction, wrong direction? And then we had two open-ended questions where they could say anything they wanted, unbiased, we haven't led them with any questions. And we first asked them, do you have any concerns? And then we followed that up with, what do you like? And I reversed the order here, we're gonna look at what do you like first, but the positive comments, what we did is you had a lot of comments and we coded them so that it'd be really easy to kind of digest what people are talking about. And so these themes are just grouping them into themes. And a lot of people just said, nice surroundings, it's a beautiful place, neighborly community, good amenities, safe and secure, good location. And so there, that's that. Sixty-five percent of the people left a comment, we didn't force them to, so they left a comment. Then we asked, are there areas for improvement? City maintenance and cleanliness was the number one issue, followed by safety and security issues, growth and traffic and infrastructure is not keeping up with, with what's going on around here. So, so those are some pretty big things and you know, I, like, this is the first city I've ever seen where city maintenance and cleanliness came up as like the number one concern. And so that's unique to you, you know, but it is something that is, that is there. You can look at the detail, I'm gonna go underneath one level and go, okay, so what do people actually say? And if you wanted to look into further detail, let's just say we wanted to look at the safety and security issues, you can click on that box up there and all of these comments, although they might have left more than one comment, all of them will have mentioned safety in one form or another. And it's, we use AI to help us group these, so if it's not a hundred percent right, like it's mostly right. But you can really kind of go through and then the chief can look at the, let's go down and look at what people had to say about safety. I will say for the most part, it is, we want more help from the police. I mean, it's a very common thing, not less. It is, we would love to see them more in our neighborhoods, not less. So it's a proactive and not a negative feeling about safety, but just a rather a desire to do more. But yeah, I just wanted to mention that. Now, I'm gonna show you some benchmarks. These are a variety of benchmarks, I'm gonna show you four things to look at on the benchmarks. The first thing, would you refer the city to a friend as a great place to live? We've asked this of a lot of cities and West Valley City comes out rather low. Compared to others, are we better or worse? West Valley comes out rather low. But are we going in the right direction and the city is improved? West Valley's rather respectable. So if you look at it, it's sort of like an X Y thing and the intercept on your Y axis is the refer friends score and compared to others, how are we doing? So your intercept is rather low, a long history. It's like years and years and years have brought you to a place where people think, maybe we're not as good as other cities. You know what I mean? It's like, it's like, like, not like the last three months or the last three years even, but are we going the right direction and has the city improved? That is recency. And so they feel you're doing a really good job and really compared to other cities, you're more like, you're, 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 you know, strong on going the right direction. So I just wanted to mention that where you're headed right now is very positive and good on you, you know, for, for making some good choices there. I will, any questions that any of you have right now on that? We'll continue. Feel free to interrupt at any time. City prioritization, this is kind of the heart of the survey. It's, it's to figure out where do we go from here, what do we focus on? And so we went through a variety of things that your city wanted to know about and we grouped them into certain themes. One was, what about our city amenities? This is the city amenities question. So we looked at the city amenities, on the left-hand side, you see them listed, the parks and the trails and the entertainment events and the library and so forth. We asked people to look down that list on the left, left-hand side and select two where they thought the city should focus their attention. And so people would pick their two. And then if they did select it, as important to them, we had them rate it. So the ratings that you see on the right-hand side are people who care about that topic. And it shortened the survey because not everybody had to answer every single question about how are we doing on the library when they maybe don't even care about it that much. But the ones who did evaluate the library care about it a great deal. And they said this is their most important thing. So we look at this, the city parks and open spaces are extremely important to your residents and you're doing, I would say, pretty good, right? I see Parks and Rec down here, she did a really good job and, but there is room to improve. So it's a good thing that she's looking at this. So it's not a, a, a fire, but it is something to, to, to look at and maybe do a little improvement on. The trail system, also important and a lot. The trail system, also important and a lot of room that you could improve in the long run. And that might become part of your parks and whatever system, right? You might want to think about how that works. In many cities, we've done these surveys. And when a city gets bigger and bigger and bigger, you need places for them to go and not feel like they're in this big crazy city any longer. And so the parks and the trails make a huge impact on that. And if a city can get ahead of that and build the parks and the trails, then the small-town feel and, you know, it's a great place to live, those things rise right up, right? And that came out here. You'll notice down here golf courses. Now, there are people who care a great deal about the golf courses. 2% mentioned that, but they seem to be adequate and not a lot of concerns about your golf courses. So you can say, look at something and say, oh, I'm going to look at the sports facilities here. Not very many picked it, and it's rather negative. And so you might have come to your city council meetings, people who are complaining about that, and you go, ah, there's not very many of them and they're very passionate about this. But maybe you do do something about it. Maybe you just have to prioritize when. I'm going to look at the next thing, city benefits. You don't normally have any responsibility for these city benefits. Beautification may be a little bit family-friendly, quality schools, great place to raise children. But these are things people care a great deal about, and you might influence them. And so, so looking at these things, great place to work is pretty low on importance for people down here on the bottom. But the beautification is really high. They care about this. You know, it was fascinating on the amenities, what they wanted was city parks and open spaces, et cetera. But now in the benefits, they want beautification. And that was also one of the things in the comments they talked about. You know, let's make this thing look nice around here. It's a, and I look at what you've done already, which is really good. And I think you have a desire to continue the city beautification. Because you have quite a few people who say we've got a lot of room to improve on city beautification. Growth and development, this is always a tough one, always more negative for cities, especially cities that have grown a great deal over the years. On the other hand, on the left-hand side, you have the prioritization. So this is super helpful. Should we focus on commercial area revitalization, which is near the bottom, or public streets keeping up with the growth, or affordability housing options? It was good to follow the housing people talking about that. Because it does seem that that's still important and a negative, and maybe not something you don't want to take your eye off of, but the streets and roads, which I noticed you're doing a lot of work on your streets. Good on you, you know, for doing that, a tough thing. And it can be a challenge. But always importance, performance. And you can keep your mind focused on the things that are of highest importance over the coming three years. Safety and security. Crime prevention is the highest. Vandalism prevention and correction. And cityhood and neighborhood safety patrols. So those are all things, they're more prevention-oriented, as you'll see. The police services, they care about it. It's right in the middle, and they're doing pretty good. So your police are great. This isn't like a condemnation of the police. It's probably just a desire to see them more. And so that's a really important thing. Fire and EMS, not as many people mentioned it, and they're doing great. So fire chief has kind of nailed that one. And I think you just keep an eye on that one, and you're in good place. Leadership. These are just questions really about this table, literally around here. What do they wish city leaders would do? And managing the city growth wisely is the number one thing that they talked about. Valuing resident input and engagement and planning strategically for the future. I know you're doing a lot of that. It's like those are three things to keep a good eye on and to just make sure you do that well. But you know, I would say on this one, people had a hard time choosing a number one and really choosing the things that are down below. A lot of them are nearly the same and they're picking two. So people are picking different two, you know, as they're going through this. It's not a universal thing. And so unfortunately, you're probably going to have to pay attention to almost all of them. You know, and that's just not an easy thing to give you. But that's, all of these are pretty important to people. The last slide I want to show you is perhaps the most important one in this dashboard. What we did, after everybody went through the five areas before, the amenities, the benefits, the growth, they all picked two out of each one. And by the end, each person had picked 10 items as their most important. And then we showed them those 10, and we said, here's the 10 that you picked. Which four should the city focus on? That allows us to show you what we have on this chart. Everybody's top four is shown on the left-hand column. And instead of showing you 50 attributes or 45 to 50 attributes, all of them, I'm just showing the top 20. So on this page, you have the top 20 most important attributes. So what's the number one city beautification? Astonishing that you would get something like that being so high, but a lot of people care about that. And so really what you should do ideally is focus on these top five or maybe even the top 10, and make sure they get a proper amount of attention during the coming year, two or maybe even three years as you think about this. And you can go down further if you wish, you know, but those top 10 are meaningful. And sometimes they're the top 10 because you're doing a great job. They don't understand it, and you need to communicate better. And sometimes they're in the top 10 because there's a little bit of room for us to improve and fix that up, right? And so it's also a good thing on these top 10 to, when you do anything, to shout it out and say, hey, we've just fixed this, we've just fixed that, you know, or we've just addressed this, or we've expanded that. We've done a little beautification here and there. This is something that our residents picked as a really high priority. So it's an area where you'd be wise to talk about it if you do it, even if it was already in your plans. You know, you just talk about these things and get it out there and let people know because these are the important things. And now I'm going to pause right here and see if you have questions. Anything?
I think it's incredible. Give us the insight how to make a better action in, you know, in the future of our city. Kind of like, in work, listen to residents. And one of the particular columns you said about this table, so we know how to feel and we do what the residents want us to do.
Right?
It's a good start.
In my city, I did this, and we had a council who pretty much rejected it. And then the mayor, well, the current mayor, he got it. And he ran on the top things that were on this, right? And he won handily. He won handily, but he's also led with it. You know what I mean? He's been very consistent doing that. And what a great mayor. He's like, I mean, people still don't like him for certain things. But they, you know, they love him for many of the things he's doing exactly right. And there are tough decisions anybody has to make. But, you know, I think it is, I agree with you. This is a, in a way, it's a gift, you know, to have it. And then number one, important support. You go, oh, this is important and we're doing great. Keep an eye on it. This is important, and we've got some room to improve. Maybe we ought to do something here and just figure out how to do that a little bit better. So.
I think we have, remember, what's the, has a question. Okay, Councilmember Whatstone?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just curious, in terms of the responses, it sounds like we had a strong number of responses. But how does that compare to other cities as a percentage of the total population of that city?
Well, in our case, we stopped, we wanted to stop at 1,500 because if you go more than that, you're just asking more people, but it doesn't change your results at all. So we stopped at the upper limit. In some cities, though, to answer your question, in some cities, we're able to get about 10 to 15% of the population to respond. And in West Valley City, I presume had we really worked this, we probably could have gotten considerably more. But it would have been just adding expense and also not making a difference in your decision. But typical is, typical of a large city, you get less. It's just the case. People are a little less involved in a large city. So 4 to 5% is common in a large city of your adult population. And then in a small city, we can get 20 to 30% response rate, but it's a small city. And, you know, they're a little more engaged. So it does range, and I have picked up quite a bit of difference in depending on the size of the city. And also sometimes the affluency of a city makes a difference. A more affluent city seems to have greater participation and engagement, and a less affluent city seems to have less. But you did really well. You were very respectable.
Well, and it's nice that one of the most important things is the city beautification and cleanliness, and that was one of our priorities at our strategic plan.
Oh, really?
Council as well.
Well done. Well done, yeah. All righty, I'm going to show a couple more things here. We did ask some questions about business. We asked people, what type of business would you like to see more of in the city? And restaurant chains are number one, and grocery, and local and small businesses, and specialty food stores. So those are the big ones. And then we actually got you some names. So people told us the names. Now, some of them just said a generic, you know, I'd like more of these. But when they gave us a name, that's what we're seeing on this one. So if you, you might want to go to Trader Joe's and say, look, we know you might have other plans, but our citizens want you to come here. And so, you know, you could do something with this to give your business development person some ammo to go to Trader Joe's and see what you can arrange. But I thought this was kind of clever. Chick-fil-A's on here, I noticed your building went right across the street. So some of the things, maybe you're already filling up. But I thought this was a very clever and a thoughtful one. And then beneath it, you have their actual comments, if you want to spend some time and look at the comments. I do want to talk briefly about employee contact. So we asked residents if they have had contact with employees or departments. And 66% indicated that they had, in the last six months, had contact with utility billing, or the police department, or code enforcement. So there's a lot of contact happening out there. And if they did have contact, we asked them to rate that experience. How did that go? And so you can see the fire, although there weren't as many who had contact with the fire, it was super positive. And the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, even less. There's 57 people, this is not percentages here, these are just the actual number of cases. So 57% did that, and they rated them very high. And so pretty high ratings up and down. The mayor and council, you know, you're not so bad, right in the middle. So, you know, something to be proud of there. I've seen the mayor and council at the very bottom in some cities. So you have something to look at and feel comfortable with. At least you're doing that. And now you can all see if you can fight and scratch to be better for the next survey, better than each other. Maybe you have a pizza party for whoever improved the most. But you have some pretty good responses here. There is a question here, anything more to say? This is another one where Oh, okay. So do you have anything more to say? The first thing they mentioned was safety and law enforcement, and then traffic and road infrastructure. Those were the top two. So this is, they've kind of been through everything. They've seen amenities, they've seen roads, they've seen whatever. And now, at least at the beginning, we didn't bias them. We said, what's most important to you? At the end, they're completely biased. I mean, they've been through everything and they're thinking, yeah, this is what I want to tell the city. And this is the last part. And if you want to look at that, I'm going to go down to the detail here. And I'm going to look at the public safety and law enforcement. So you can click on this. And then, as before, you can do a drop-down box here, and you can click on public safety. And so chief, you could do this if you wanted to, or somebody on your team. And then you can read what people have to say about safety. And not only that, you can tell that this is a male who's 75 years or older. They've lived 20-plus years in the city, and they don't have any children. And as we scroll down, you know, you can find you got a female who's 65 to 74, or you have. And so you don't know who the person is, but you have a little bit of a sense of who's on the other side. And that kind of helps you just get a feel for what's there. And there's some great questions. Also, I do want to warn you, when you go through the comments, it can be disheartening when you read things that can be hurtful, right? So then you need to go back and look at the priority and, you know, and realize that a few people feel very strongly about certain things. And keep focused on the vital, on the many rather than the few. And then, of course, you want to read the comments, but try to let some of it roll off the backs and then just see what you can do to address some things that are really important. I think that's about it. We do have a question, I think it's useful to show. So the question is, below is a list of potential improvements for the city. As we look to the future, which ones are your priorities? So here are the priorities. So replace and upgrade and add parks. So we did that. It's a good thing you're kicking off something to do with parks. Sidewalk renovations also. So a couple of big ones there to maybe focus on. And did I show you the filters on the right-hand side? Did I do that? I don't think I did. On the right-hand side, if you're looking at this, you could say, yes, yes. But what do older people think? What do the people who are like 55 and older, what are their priorities? And so you can just select those, and then everything automatically changes. And so the parks go down in importance for those people, and the sidewalks go up in importance so that they can walk around. I mentioned the trails, right? And you can see the importance of trails going up for your older residents. But you can do that same thing. You can do females with children, you can do people in area, whatever. You can do renters, and you can look at the data. So I will pause there. There's another question about communications, but maybe I've been my 20 minutes and a little bit more. Any additional questions you might have?
Any other questions?
I will say, for your park survey, I've helped many cities with park surveys. And I realize your company might, but if you want me to work with them, we could do something very good.
Yeah, I think this will take a little bit to absorb it all.
Do you know, and if you want me to come back and help in any way, like if you're going to be doing anything, like, I'd be glad to help. Like, this is something I'm, we have a multi-study agreement. I have every incentive to help you really use it. Sometimes also the second study can be the same thing again, or it can be something completely different. You know, I help cities on topics of all types. And it works out really well for both, for me and for them.
Well, and I think this is a good tool to take into our next strategic plan as well, to know what the priorities are, to make sure they're in line with what we think the priorities are. Any other comments or questions?
What the next step you're going to do with our city when you do this one, the first, and then for this next step?
Sometimes, okay, so first of all, I'm glad to help and present and talk and share what I've observed elsewhere and so forth. So I'm glad to come and do that, number one. Number two, oftentimes the second survey can be a year later, but there's no, like, it doesn't matter when. And if there's a topic here that you say, we need more information about this topic in order to make a really good decision, I can work with you to design a survey that will do a really solid deep dive on that topic and help you. And the best ones are where you have ideas that you float in front of people and see how they react to the ideas, you know, stronger than asking them what they want. Asking them what they want becomes like chaos. But sharing with other things you're willing to do and you're considering and maybe fit in a good way and have them respond, you can make quick decisions about where to go next. And so that's a logical one. Many of the cities around here, that's precisely what we've done, is a deep dive that goes broad, I mean, a broad survey that kind of gives you the big understanding, and then a deep dive on something to help us figure out, now, where do we go from here?
Okay, any questions online? All good. Thank you so much. All right. We now have our council calendar. Is there any concerns or questions on that?
Two questions, last one, are you, are you getting food trucks back?
I can't remember. They were on the calendar.
So my understanding is that it's no longer a city function, and it's just something that they're doing.
Oh, okay. In the same location?
Same location, but it's not city-sponsored, if that correctly me.
Okay. Okay. Well, there are food trucks at the farmer's market on Thursdays.
There are.
There's your opportunity to do both. All right, any potential future agenda items?
Yeah, maybe I have one, maybe a comment or something. This one may be for Steve Patrick. You know, we have the hospital now. You know, we have the hospital now, uh, recently, we, you know, have the, the break-in there. So I wonder right now about uh, office building and we maybe allow them to have like a hospital team support or something, or support team there, and then they can rent it out, office building, and they can have that hospital. It's that we have that line item in the, you know, the potash on it, like that, for office, office uh, building. We allow people to, uh, to have a hospital uh, support team for office building.
In the, in cities, um, yes.
Okay, and, and that good, yeah, that just wants to call them.
Um, I've got, they're probably both. Code enforcement, parking enforcement, um, just wonder if we could get an update and maybe an assessment if we need more parking enforcement officers. Um, and then the other one was um, holiday decorations, had complaints this last week, three people complained about a house in our area that has Halloween decorations up year round and so, don't know if there's interest in, in adding that to the code or restricting when holiday decorations can be up or not.
More of a communication item in our future studies? If it moves to a
Yeah, see if anybody's interested in taking it further.
Okay, great, got it, thank you.
Then my, when bringing up the hospital, I've had a couple of people reach out, this might be a communication as to how's the dust, the traffic, the noise, all of that going to affect the residents around there? So I heard from one resident who lives right across the street, he's concerned about that. So I don't know if we can communicate, you know, what, what the construction's gonna look like. Or, you know, how they're gonna try not to affect all the neighbors around there, and there's a school there as well. Uh, so I think that might be good to put out some kind of communication to the public about that. I don't know, unless there's a, another way to do that.
I know they've been pretty, pretty proactive communicating all of that. So we just probably need to get with them, they could, might be a better setting for them to actually have town hall meetings themselves and then we can, we can.
And is it the people to the east that are complaining?
Yeah.
And I know with the permits and that, they have to have SWIP, which is, they have to contain all the dust, put a lot of water out.
Yeah. So, yeah, they were just concerned about how that's going to affect them.
Okay.
They drive and live, you know, are in that area.
Okay. Well, then if you notice, they have to have a, an exit, that the trucks have to run over to get all the mud off their tires as well, so.
Yeah, is that gonna be right?
So we just have Probably, so we'll
I think if we just inform the residents, they can calm down a little bit.
Yeah, what to watch for and who to call if they see mud on the street.
Yep.
Call public birds, they go out and force it.
Yeah.
And where it's a state, I don't know who enforces what, but figure it out.
Yeah.
Cause I know I've called before and said, they're getting mud on the street, and they've gone and then had them fix their
That's a hard thing for our residents to understand, is that we don't control the streets, a lot of them. And it's hard for them, cause a lot of comments have been, we need, you know, we need to do this, and this, and this with our streets, it's like, well, we don't really control the streets, it's a state road, or, yeah. And I think we just made a better effort.
Okay. They're really good about communication, so I think if we bring it up, they'll take care of it really quick.
They being
Hospital, hospital, yeah. They have a really good communication team. Any council reports?
Just, farmers markets are still running. Pretty very well. Proud of them, whenever I've gone to them. Even to range your apartments with the opening. Another one about to switch from the housing authority to you can talk to them. Yeah, you can talk to them. It'll come a lot better than they ever have. Um, Colacross Hospital also did their dedication of their chapel. Very interesting, just had a few more fans out in the toy area where everybody was sitting. It did get a little stuffy until I started opening doors. So. Good.
Anybody else?
Well, the fireworks on the fourth were good. Went off without a hitch. You were good, watched them from a rooftop.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, it was really nice. Good job on that.
Yeah, I've had um, emails and comments saying that the residents really enjoyed them. Best fireworks they've seen, so that was good. As a host city for the Olympics, we started our meetings and they're very positive and a lot of good things to look forward to, so that's a good start, we'll have those quarterly, so happy about that. And then the chapel, I didn't notice it got warm at all. Cause I love the heat.
That's good, you're never warm.
My fingers right now are freezing, so. Anyway, they did a really good job, they had a really good turnout, and it was really nice, so. Now, there was a lot the last week or so to go to. Nobody online has anything? Okay, so we do have need for a closed session for disposition of real property. So if somebody would like to make that motion, and then we will close without speaking about anything else and adjourn from then.
Our motion to move to closed session. And when we're done talking about the disposition of real property, we'll I was gonna say abort, but we're we're gonna adjourn.
Second.
Maybe I'm motioning a second, all of, oh, no, that's Nicole. Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Hugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah.
Councilmember Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll give five minutes to switch out staff that needs to be here for that.